Is there a motion to open the meeting?
So moved.
Your second.
Second.
Great, thank you. All in favor, Mary, open the voting.
Oh. You know, I haven't opened it yet, so I'll just say yes.
Okay, we could, we could take that, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Great, meeting being opened, we will move on to item 2.1, the Pledge of Allegiance, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, and one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay. Moving on to item 3.1 on tonight's agenda. Public input number one, is there anybody here from the public that would like to speak, say something to us, ask a question during public input one, you would have three minutes, if you could either raise your hand or put your question into the chat room, now would be the time to do that under public input one. God bless. Mr. Fisher, any hands?
But you're not seeing any.
They don't see anything in the chat room. Okay. Move on to our section five of tonight's agenda, the superintendent's report, starting with item 5.1, and turn it over to Mr. Nichols.
Thanks, Brian. I'm going to talk about a few things. I'll, I'll start with an overview of where the district is at with regard to the vaccine. As of this morning, as part of Phase 1A, we had our nurses, our school psychologists, our social workers, our speech therapists, occupational therapists, and physical therapists. We made them aware that they were eligible to be vaccinated last week, and as of this morning, 14 of our employees in those categories received the vaccine. And the way it works is they get two doses of the Moderna vaccine, one now, and my understanding is the second 28 days later. So they'll be going for their second dose in roughly one month. The first dose, if you've read the recent commentary in the papers, there is discussion out there with Biden perhaps releasing the stockpile and not holding on to vaccines for the second dose, that the second dose could be put off beyond the four weeks, and there's debate in the scientific community about whether to do that because they haven't studied necessarily the efficacy of, of that kind of move. But for now, the expectation is that those people who are vaccinated will get their second dose 28 days from the first dose. Phase 1B, that was announced to start today, January 11th, and that includes teachers, substitute teachers, student teachers, school administrators, parent staff, and support staff. Really anybody who works with students, and the numbers in our district are 263 full-time staff and 39 substitute staff. So that comes to a little over 300 employees. There's been a lot of, I guess, concern understandably about how to register for the vaccines. So there are some websites and portals up. As of this afternoon, there were really no local locations where people could make an appointment. I made an appointment for my parents and myself in New York City at the Javits Center for this upcoming weekend, and I know that people are in the process of making appointments at Jones Beach. And again, the eligible people in 1B, Group 1B that is, really have to navigate the portal to figure out where to make an appointment. The district's role in it, in this process, is to provide a letter from the superintendent stating that the employee is in fact employed by the Sag Harbor Schools, and then the employee shows up with the letter and a photo ID, and they would be administered the first dose of the vaccine that's available, which, from my understanding, is again the, the Moderna vaccine. The second thing I wanted to talk about with regard to tonight's report is the testing update, and I'm, just to give you a little bit of context, it's important to realize that we've said from the start, that the goalposts are, are switching. And nowhere is that more accurate with regard than with regard to testing and some of the announcements in terms of its impact on schools remaining open and, and any requirements to remain, remain open. So if you go back to July 13th of this year, at that time, Governor Cuomo, who I think has done a very good job, by the way, I don't mean this as a criticism, but he has made some changes. On July 13th, he announced that if at any point after August 1st, the test positivity rate were to go above 9%, that schools would have to close. Well, in fact, we're above 9% as a county. That is the 14-day average. On October 6th, he announced the Microcluster Initiative, and we've reviewed that in previous board meetings and basically set up three zones, yellow, orange, and red. And yellow basically was if the 10-day average was above 2.5%, you had to do some things to remain open. Orange and red respectively were 10-day averages of over 3% and 4%, and in those two scenarios, school districts were required to test 20% for orange and 30% for red over a two-week period, which was then expanded to one month. Again, when you think about those test positive percentages, 2.5, 3, and 4, we're well over that number right now, so the Microcluster Initiative, from my perspective, is sort of old news. Then on January 5th, in a press conference, the governor announced that any counties that are north of 9% would have to test to remain open. And the superintendents, you know, across the state have been looking for clarification regarding those comments made in the press conference, and to date, they haven't received anything. So where does that leave Sag Harbor? Our initial plan was to comply with the testing requirements in order to remain open if we were designated a school within a microcluster zone. So if we were designated orange, we would indeed test 20% of the staff and students who are on campus, so it excludes the remote learners. We have about 1,000 people, so that would be about 200 people per month. So that was our original intent, but it seems like that is sort of out the window in terms of school districts, at least from my perspective, being held to that. So now the, the question is, what, what do we do? Do we initiate testing on our own, or do we wait for the, the governor to perhaps provide some more guidance? My recommendation at this point is that we begin to test sooner rather than later, regardless of what the governor says. I, I suggest that we stick to the orange designation, which would require us to test 20% of that 1,000 number that I just referenced, once per month. If we do that, there are really two options. You could go through the Suffolk County Department of Health, who would get rapid tests from the New York State Department of Health. There would be no cost to the district, except the staffing expenses, which would be fairly expensive, because you probably have to have about five or six staff to run a testing site, and when you work it out, it, it works out to about $4,000 a month for 200. The other option would be to contract out with a private lab and have them do it, and the cost for that scenario is the, the lab would, all tests would run through insurance, so there would be no cost to the district except for those who are uninsured. In those instances, the district would be billed $85 per test. So a rough calculation, if we were to assume in Sag Harbor that there are 20% of the population perhaps is uninsured, and that's a guess on my part, but we are a pretty affluent community, 20% times 85, do the math, it's still significantly less than getting the test from the Suffolk County Department of Health. The one other significant difference between the two options is that option number one, the Suffolk County Department of Health, uses a rapid test. And depending on, on what literature you read, the accuracy of those tests can be anywhere from, you know, the low 50s to 65%. The option, second option, which is the lab uses a PCR test, which really is the gold standard, and would provide much more reliable data. So my recommendation to the Board of Education is to move forward and schedule a date for a private entity to come in and conduct those tests. I've had conversations with one outside lab. We received a script from our school physician, and we're prepared to move forward in the next week or two, probably about two weeks with our first date of testing, at which time we would test 100 school staff and students, and then two weeks from that point, we would test another 100. So that covers the testing update. 5.3 is a, a quick discussion of where we're at with the school status in terms of being either remote or in-person. All of you know that I made a recommendation to remain, or to go to remote the week after our winter break, and the primary reason I made that recommendation, there were two reasons. Number one was that I believe that the, there was an increased risk due to holiday gatherings and people traveling for virus transmission. I believe that that risk dissipated significantly with, you know, one week passed, so I recommended that we come back in. The second consideration in, in making that recommendation to go to remote was that the test positivity rate in Suffolk County was in the 12, 13% range. It seems to have leveled off for the time being. I think today was actually, today's reading is yesterday's data, but I think below 10% today for the first time in a while. But I would not read too much into that. I still think we're in the throes of this, and I think that, that it's likely that that number could creep back up. Our challenge moving forward with, with regard to remaining in person is not going to be the test. It's, it's not going to be the students testing positive, it's going to be students and staff testing positive and the related quarantines impacting our ability to effectively staff the building. So for argument's sake, if, if we had multiple cases that resulted in multiple staff members having to quarantine, and I'll talk about the quarantine changes in a moment, that impacts our ability to have the necessary staff to remain open. And that's something that's really beyond our control. We have our safety measures in place, but if over the course of a week, we have, for argument's sake, five or 10 test positives in the school community, and that would result in, you know, 20 to 30 teachers being out for 10 days, then we're not going to be able to remain open. And, you know, we'll apprise you of those circumstances as they become, as the information becomes available, but it's really a day-by-day thing at this point. The last thing I wanted to touch upon was the quarantine revision. Prior to the 29th of December, if you were a test positive, or you were a close contact with someone, you were required to quarantine for 14 days. Or if you had traveled outside of the contiguous states, within the United States, or to a US territory in a CDC Level 2 or higher status, you, prior to the 29th, had to quarantine for 14 days. The governor changed that ago to say that you could shorten that by quarantining for three days, and then taking a test on day four, and if that test came back negative, you could come out of quarantine. On the 29th, he shortened that 14 days to 10 days, and suggested that on day 10, you could, if you were quarantined due to being a close contact, come out, and then you're supposed to monitor your symptoms from 10, from day 10 through 14. If you traveled outside of New York or its contiguous states, to the places I just referenced, you could choose to quarantine for 10 days, or access that four-day option that I just talked about, which would enable you to come back to school either on the afternoon of day four or day five, assuming a negative test. So that's the summary of the superintendent's report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
So Jeff, I, I think, um, thank you for that. There's a lot, a lot of movement, moving parts, and you guys are staying on top of that, so we appreciate it. I, I think, one, there's a, let's just go to the, there's a question in the chat room, if you want to just address that one question, and then we can go to board questions.
Sure.
And I can read it if you'd like.
Nope, I can see it. So in, if we do the PCR test, it would be with Enzo Labs, which is a, a third party that has a license to conduct these tests. They have, so they would conduct the test, they, they would be sent to their own laboratory, so they don't have to send it to an external entity, and then they would actually enter the data into the New York State portal. Enzo Labs has run these, these tests for other districts in Suffolk County, and I've spoken to the superintendents, who said that they were excellent to work with, and the process was pretty seamless.
Great, thank you, Jeff. With, with some of these revisions, we're going to be updating our morning survey health questionnaire to change, to change and reflect the quarantine status and the different state statuses as they evolve?
Yeah, we, we, we changed the questionnaire to reflect the 10-day quarantine the other day. Mr. Fisher did that.
Great. And I'm just repeating some of this stuff so that anybody watching or on YouTube knows that we're, we're actively working on this, and it's a, it's a fluid situation. With respect to your recommendation that we be proactive instead of reactive in testing, just what were, when you think, what would be your, your recommendation as to when to start that?
As soon as I can with Enzo Labs. So I'm thinking the, the tentative they, date they gave me, which I have to confirm, would be November in the low twenties, like 22nd, 23rd, 24th, I don't have a calendar in front of me, but in and around there.
And we, the process of that would be consents first are sent out, or just to walk the public through that so that no one is surprised when we?
Yeah, so there would be, there would be consent to test, and we would go with volunteers to start. Our original thinking was that if there was not significant or sufficient buy-in to get to that 20% point, then we would have to speak with our attorneys about the possibility of mandating the testing. But my sense is that meeting that 20% threshold for the first go-around is not going to be an issue. It's not that invasive a process. It's a quick nose swab, not the one that goes all the way up. And it's an opportunity to get accurate data about whether or not your child has the virus or not, which is valuable.
Which I think is important. It's either insurance, or the district is covering that cost, so.
Correct.
It's important. And I just saw a question pop up that, would it be covered by insurance? But yes, it would be either covered by insurance, or the district would pay if there was a situation where there was not insurance.
Correct, exactly.
And board questions or comments for Mr. Nichols at this point, or thoughts on proactive testing, anything that Jeff has covered under section five?
I would just add that I, I'm a supporter of proactively test, testing even if it's not necessary. I, I think it's a way for us just to make sure that we can ensure the safest environment possible, and if there are issues, we'll find out earlier, and the only way we find out if there's issues, the safer people can be.
Go ahead, Alex. Thank you, Chris.
I'd say thanks as well. I support Jeff's recommendation. I think it's a good idea. And I think you guys are doing an amazing job in what's obviously very difficult circumstances. These are really difficult decisions to make every day, particularly where we have these state guidelines that seem to be changing all the time, and a, and a county health department that has proven once again to be completely useless. So I, I appreciate it.
Anybody else from the board, or at this, members of the public that would have a question for Mr. Nichols, based on what was just covered?
I'm in support of Jeff's decision as well, so I.
I think you have unanimous support, Jeff. It sounds like you have board support. I haven't heard from.
I support it.
It will not say unanimous. It'll say board support to, to move forward with that.
I support it. I guess, I'm just from an operational perspective, when you send out all the consents to people, is that when you're going to ask for their insurance information, so that it can just get billed to insurance right then and there?
I'm going to work that through with Enzo, but I posed that question to them the other day, and they said that it was pretty seamless. So the details of that, I'll be sending out with the overview to the community.
Cool. Sounds great.
Yorgos?
Yeah, I, I agree with this one also. So how is it going to work in the beginning? So who's going to take it first, the test? Is it going to be just with volunteers, you mentioned, and then how is it going to work from then on?
Probably if we have more than 20%, which I suspect we will, in terms of people willing to test, and we'll set up some type of system where it'll be rotational, where the first, you know, whoever tests the first go-around obviously won't get tested two weeks later. And I envision this really going every two weeks, 100, it'll be 150 people, actually. I said 100 before. In order for a lab to commit to do the testing, the minimum that they would do would be 150, not 100. So I, we would roughly be doing 30%, not 20% of our entire staff, student population in person every month, which means 150 every two weeks. We would attempt, Yorgos, to go through the entire population of people before going back to someone a second time.
Okay. And is there a maximum at a certain time? So if, let's say, half of the people, whatever, they wanted to take in at the beginning, would we allow this, or are we just going to cap it at, at that number?
I would probably cap it at 150, just because of the ongoing costs associated with it. I know I say that, like, if it's 150 and, and 20% of that, which is 30 times 85, is 2,400, was that 2,550 roughly? So around 2,550, if that's, I say that's nothing, but it adds up. It's 5,000 a month if we do it every two weeks. So I, I think I would probably cap it at 150, that's my thinking, and just keep doing that every two weeks.
Okay. And then the way it's going to work, is it going to be at the school facility, where they're going to take the test, or is it something they're going to take with it? Because we're talking about the PCR, so is it something to take with them at home, and then they do it and bring it in the morning, or is it going to be all done there?
It's going to be all done at our facility. So we would probably set up one area, maybe two. When I initially talked to them, they wanted one space, which means we'd have to transport students from the three buildings to get tested.
Okay.
For one area.
And then it will take about a day or two to get their results back, I guess, right?
Depending on the speed with which their lab operates, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Sounds good.
Um, Jeff, I have a question based on what you just said. If we need to transport them, then there'll be some additional transportation charge potentially?
Potentially. But it, we do have staff that are available, so I don't, I don't, I don't see it being a significant charge.
Thank you.
Just two more questions before we move on, Jeff. One question was from the public, would, will it go by grade or small group from each grade, if, if, if we know at this point?
We don't know at this point, but it would be equitable and rotational as per my comments before, so that whoever's tested, for instance, on the first go-around, another group of people would be tested on the second go-around, and the third go-around, et cetera.
And one more question, thank you. One more question from the chairman was, this is the nostril wipe or test versus the deeper PCR test, just as a matter of concern to bring with it, or fear?
I don't know if I can get into that granular level of detail.
Question, but yeah.
That it was not the one that went all the way up, but somewhat up your nose.
Right. Any other board questions at this point before we move on? If anyone from the public has another question, you can add that at public input number two at the end of our meeting. Moving on to section six of the agenda, the principals' report.
So why don't we start, let me start by saying that this evening, and they announced this last night, the governor is having a vaccine webinar, primarily due to people asking for more information, so that they can share it with their staff. Well, I had a board meeting tonight, and I couldn't attend that, so I asked Mr. Malone to attend that in my place, so we will, unless Betty's ready to give a quick report, which I don't know if you are, Betty, Mr. Malone didn't say that you were, I'll start with Ms. Carriero.
Great.
Hi all. So we're excited that today was the first day back with kids. It was a little odd last week, walking around, seeing talk to computers and not have the excitement in the hallways as we normally get to see. We've been still continuing our college process, and we're hearing back from colleges, and our kids have been doing a great job with that. Um, remote last week, kudos to our teachers for that fast transition, and because we are synchronously learning, the, that we've been streaming every class, it was a smooth transition for our families. There was limited issue with that. The, in our International Baccalaureate Program, the students have been completing their IAs, which are their internal assessments that are done by their teachers, and then our teachers are grading it. Ms. Westhoff and Mr. Guinan are planning their next whale or war attack for our high school and our middle school for that school building spirit. On the boring side, we've been doing the preliminary budget, so I met with all the teachers to go over what needs and wants they have for next year. We're going to try to keep the budget the same as last year. Our school counselors have worked on, started working on numbers for scheduling, and that process of scheduling for next year will begin in a month. We've had check-ins with our students. We have a survey that goes out for the hybrid learners Mondays and Thursdays, so that we can see how kids are doing, and our school counselors have been on top of that, and we have been holding six through 12 grade teams to make sure we're hitting those social emotional marks for our kids. And that's about it.
Right. Betty, are, are you prepared to say a few words?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
So regarding remote learning, it, last week, it did go really well.
Nope, you just went, we just lost you, Betty.
Sorry, I'm on a Chromebook. It's a little tricky.
All right, go ahead.
Is this better?
Yes.
So I can say that regarding learning last week, remote learning, the teachers and the students were very well-prepared. And I can say that that is in large part to the teachers getting the students ready early on, pretty much as early on as September. They've been getting their students ready for Google Classroom, how to access the applications through their iPad or their Chromebooks. And the teachers, as well as the students, have become really well-versed. So last, for, last week, excuse me, was pretty seamless. It, it went smooth. But everyone was beyond overjoyed being back in the building today, that is for sure.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Bramoff, there was a, a change to athletics, specifically with regard to some of our shared sports. Do you want to touch upon that real quick?
Yes, very briefly, last week, as you know, we were on remote instruction. East Hampton was not, so they began the season for boy swimming and co-ed winter track. We've actually done a flip-flop this week where the East Hampton is on remote learning, and the Sag Harbor students will be participating in boy swimming as well as co-ed winter track. We will not be practicing with the East Hampton students. They will return to practice with us on the 19th, I believe.
Great, thanks, Mr. Bramoff. And, and just real quickly, I, I think that the reason that our swimmers and, and track participants can participate this week is they're going to be by themselves. So there's going to be essentially cohorting going on. They're not going to be interacting with East Hampton, so that's that. So now our big presentation is the first component of the budget. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jennifer Bishamy. Um, that's that. So now our big presentation is the first component of the, uh, budget. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jennifer Bishamy.
Hello, everyone. I'm going to start, um, sharing my screen with you. So let me just bring the presentation up. And then I can go ahead. And start, but this is really the, um, the first step in the budget development process. Um, it really will give everyone an idea of what funds are available to support next year's budget. And also give everyone a good indication of what propositions are needed. For. May's ballot. So I just need to try to. Get to.
Went over to the right, Jennifer, with slideshow.
Yeah, it's actually covered by the top of the zoom.
So just go down and, down into the right a little bit.
Uh, yeah, let me see. You know what? Maybe I'll just go to the PDF. That might be.
You can hit F five, it should start it too.
Oh, you think? Okay, hold on. Let's see if that works. Nope, that's not. No. Okay. Alright, sorry guys. Let me just bring up the PDF then. Because. This will be fine. You. And we're going to go to. Which is playing. Okay. So, um, we're also going to talk in detail about each reserve that we currently have and a plan for the future. So after I present the plan, if anyone wants to make any changes or adjustments to the plan, I can go ahead and do that. And on the next agenda for January twenty-fifth, there will be a resolution, um, on that agenda to approve the plan. So let's get started. Reserve funds. So why is it so important to have reserve funds? Because. Planning today and saving incrementally for expected future events can help mitigate the financial impact of major non-recurring or unforeseen expenditures on the annual operating budget. Certain reserve funds can be utilized to help protect the budget against known risks or potential lawsuits, for example, or unknown risks such as a major storm or a pandemic. Establishing and funding allowable reserve funds for a clear purpose can also help smooth out spikes in the annual budget and in the real property tax levy. In addition, reserve funds provide a mechanism for legally saving money to finance all a part of future infrastructure, equipment and other types of expenses. And reduce our reliance on borrowing and other costs associated with debt issuances to finance capital projects and acquisitions. So according to the state controller's office, an important concept to remember is that a reserve fund should be established with a clear intent or plan in mind. Regarding the future purpose used and when appropriate replenishment of funds from the reserve. Reserve funds should not be merely a parking lot for excess cash or fund balance. And school districts should balance the desirability of accumulating reserves for future needs. With the obligation to make sure taxpayers are not overburdened by these practices. And there should be a clear purpose or intent for reserve funds that aligns with statutory authorizations. And some of the recommendations from the controller is that the board should routinely review reserve fund balances. And determine if reserves are funded at appropriate levels and in accordance with statutory requirements and policy. The board and district officials should develop a formal plan. Indicating how much money will be reserved, how each reserve will be funded and when the balance will be used. And in addition, the board and district officials should review the reserves at least annually to determine if the amounts reserved are necessary and reasonable. And if they're not reasonable, then the reserve should be reduced to levels in compliance with statutory restrictions. So this is our historical fund balance. And, um, you can see it goes all the way back to two thousand eight, two thousand nine. And our fund balance is made up of all of these categories. So we have assigned fund balance. We have reserved fund balance, non-spendable fund balance, unreserved fund balance, unreserved, undesignedated fund balance. So all of this money is actually set aside to either pay for. Prior year expenditures, current year expenditures or plan for the future. Um, many of these reserves can be used to pay for future costs. And also we have part of our fund balance as what we would call our emergency fund. Um, it's our fund balance that is not earmarked to pay for any, any expenditures. And if in fact there is an emergency or we do need to. Um, tap into our fund balance, we can use that. And that is our unassigned fund balance. The unassigned fund balance is limited to four percent of our budget each year, but that is really the only category of fund balance that is not earmarked for other, other expenses. So our reserve for encumbrances, which is a top line. And I think depending on your view, you might be getting cut off on some of, some of the numbers, but, um, you could see that. At the end of the nineteen twenties school year, we had four hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars worth of fund balance that was set aside to pay for encumbrances. And encumbrances are goods and services that were purchased last year. And we either did not receive the goods or we did not, or the services weren't rendered by June thirtieth. So we had to set aside some of our fund balance in the current year to pay for those prior year expenses. The reserves that we have go, um, we have nine reserves now. You can see back in oh eight, oh nine, we only had one reserve and, um, we've, our financial condition has been improving, uh, tremendously over the years. And we're going to go into detail and talk about those nine reserves, reserves later on. Um, we had one non-spendable reserve, which was advances to the school cafeteria. Which we now actually incorporate into the budget each year. So that's why you don't see that from two thousand twelve, thirteen on. We also have appropriated fund balance, which is on the bottom of the page. And the appropriated fund balance. Is really all the reserves that are, um, fund balance that's set aside to pay for a current year's. Uh, cost or fund balance that was set aside to support the current year budget. And that you can see go at the end of nineteen twenty, that was one million, five hundred ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars. So that money is already earmarked for current year. And then the unassigned fund balance, which is one million, seven hundred and seventy-three thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars, which is really our emergency fund. And we could. Use that money if something happens throughout the year. Um, if there's some type of emergency occurs that we didn't budget for, um, the board can tap into those funds if needed. So. Through the years, uh, as I said, where two thousand eight, oh nine, we only had one reserve. And we only had sixty-five thousand dollars worth of emergency funds in the bank. So, um, going forward. Financial condition has improved and, um. Has been a direct result of our Moody's upgrades that we've actually received. So in February sixteen, the district received our first Moody's upgrade. Which was the direct result of having a healthy fund balance. And our credit rating went from double A three to double A two. And then in May of two thousand twenty. The district received another Moody's upgrade, which was fantastic. And, um, you could see a quote from our district's financial advisor. That our long-term underlying credit rating, uh, went from triple A two, I'm sorry, double A two to double A one, which is just one notch below the highest rating of triple A. And as the district's financial advisor, he basically stated that the improved credit rating was going to result in lower interest rates. On any future debt offerings by the district, including its annual cash flow borrowing. So that's including our TAM that we borrow every year. Um, we are receiving the best interest rates that we could possibly receive because of this upgrade from Moody's, which is the direct result of having. Such healthy reserves and a healthy fund balance. So let's move on. So this is the results of our operations from the end of nineteen twenty. And at the end of nineteen twenty, we were able to add nine hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven dollars to our fund balance. So our fund balance at the beginning of the year was fourteen million, three hundred and eighteen thousand, four eleven. And we ended the year at fifteen million, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars. And that increase really came about from, um, expenditures. Are, we underspent on the expenditure side. We collected less on our revenue side. But we spent less on our expenditure side. So that variance was a positive variance for the year. Which, um, is still only roughly two percent of our budget. And you could see in the middle of the slide. How that variance, um, and how that money was set aside and used. So during nineteen twenty, we actually used five hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars worth of reserves. We increased other reserves by one point four million. We had interest that we earned on our reserves of twenty thousand. And we also increased our unassigned fund balance, which is our emergency fund. We were able to increase that by fif- roughly fifty-eight, um, thousand dollars because we're limited to that four percent. And we also, um, had a decrease in our year-end encumbrances and we, but we did increase our appropriated fund balance. So this appropriated fund balance is, uh, much higher than what the district has appropriated in the past. And that was the, the direct result of the, uh, twenty percent state aid reduction that we were told that the district was going to have to incur for the current year. And this is the fund balance at the end of, um, June thirtieth, twenty twenty. So this is the detail of. Exactly which reserves increased, which reserves decreased, um, how much interest was earned for each result, uh, each reserve. And how our unassigned fund balance also went up. So we really did, um, end the year in great shape. So now I'm going to go through every single, each reserve that we have. And give everyone a little bit of historical information on how the reserve, when it was adopted, um, whether it was increased throughout the years and how it was used. And we're also going to talk about what we're recommending for the future. So we have an unemployment reserve and this was actually created by the board in June of two thousand twelve. And a referendum was not required to create this reserve. Um, it's also not required to spend monies from this reserve. The reserve itself is money set aside to just pay for unemployment costs to the state insurance fund. So you can't use this money for anything else but to pay for unemployment costs. The reserve is monitored every year for adequacy and the funding level, which was set back in two thousand twelve, was a hundred thousand dollars. So at the end of June thirtieth, twenty twenty. Our balance was a hundred and one thousand, eighty dollars. So that means that the reserve is fully funded. And it cannot be increased unless the Board of Education authorizes, um, an increase to this reserve. The, our June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. So we're saying at the end of this school year, um, we're, our recommended balance. Should really be a hundred and one thousand, eighty dollars plus an interest. Um, at the end of the year, if there is any surplus funds available, this is probably not the reserve that you want to add monies to. Um, historically, our unemployment costs have not been high. Uh, you can see down at the bottom nineteen twenty, we did end up with a little bit higher than the previous years, and that was a direct result of COVID. Um, and a lot of our employees, most, well, pretty much the majority of our employees. Um, received their full pay, but there were some substitutes that did not get paid and they were entitled to unemployment. Um, and there were some other reasons why other employees were able to collect unemployment. Um, and you can see for the twenty twenty-one year-to-date unemployment expense is rather high. But, uh, for now, we're not recommending an increase to this reserve yet. We don't really see that, but of course we'll monitor that going forward. Then we have our insurance reserve and the insurance reserve was originally set, um, or approved by the board in two thousand thirteen. And it did have a maximum cash balance of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. In two thousand sixteen, the Board of Ed amended the insurance reserve to eliminate the cash balance maximums. They understood that this is a very important reserve to have because it does fund. All of our uninsured losses. So if there is some reason that we are going to, um, have a lawsuit out there. And our insurance company is not going to pay a hundred percent, we could go ahead and tap into this reserve and use that and use these funds. And we have actually used these funds. A couple of times in twenty twenty and, um, you can see the balance is, uh, increasing and decreasing. Throughout the years. So the funding method is, uh, basically we're not able to add a lot of money to this reserve each year. So the, according to general municipal law, the amount paid into this reserve fund during any fiscal year may not exceed the greater of thirty-three thousand dollars or five percent of our budget. So of course, five percent of our budget is much more than thirty-three thousand. So we're really capped at adding thirty-three thousand a year to this, to this reserve. Um, at the end of the year, our actual balance was one million, five hundred and eight thousand dollars. And, um, we're recommending that at the end of June thirtieth, at the end of the current year, if there is surplus funds available. That we do increase their reserve by the thirty-three thousand dollars, which is the maximum contribution. And at that time, a recommendation would be to the board to increase this reserve. And of course, any interest earned will also be added to the reserve balance at the end of the year. Then we have our workers' compensation reserve. And this reserve, um, was created back in two thousand twelve and it did have an original maximum level of funding set at two hundred thousand. Um, the limit was increased several times. So in two thousand thirteen, the Board of Education increased the level to five hundred thousand. And in two thousand nineteen, the level of funding was increased to eight hundred and fifty thousand. So, and this is to pay for workers' compensation costs only. Any sort of medical hospital costs related to workers' compensation can come from this reserve. Um, the funding level. At eight hundred and fifty thousand now, um, is really the limit. We, we are fully funded. The reserve can no longer be funded unless the funding level is increased. And if the funding level is increased, uh, future funding would be authorized by the board through budgetary appropriations or year-end surplus. So we are not recommending at this time, at the end of this year, to increase the balance of this reserve or increase the funding level. So we feel that the eight hundred and fifty-four thousand is adequate. And, um, this reserve will just be increased by the interest at the end of the year. And according to our recently ordered financial statements, which, um, you actually received that financial report back in November. The district share of our total undiscounted workers' compensation liability for incurred but unpaid claims. And incurred and reported claims is two hundred eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars. So that's why. We're saying based on historical actual expenses, the current balance seems reasonable to cover a future workers' compensation costs. Unless the district, of course, has experienced a catastrophic event where we have, um, for some reason. Employees that were, um, injured and, and, you know, we would come back to the board and we would also, we would make another recommendation at that time. We have the repair reserve and the repair reserve fund was created, um, after it received voter approval. So the voters actually had to approve this reserve. Being created. This couldn't, um, the Board of Education was not authorized to, um, create this reserve on its own. And back in two thousand fifteen. Um, the reserve was, uh, set aside to pay for repairs. So repairs to capital improvements or equipment. And these are the type of repairs that don't occur annually. So these are not, um, this money is not supposed to pay for maintenance kind of projects. It's really supposed to be. Um, repairs that only happen once in a while. Um, and. It's very flexible. If you need to use this money, uh, you only need to have a public hearing and the public hearing, um, has to happen at least five days. Um, after publication of a legal notice. If for some reason there is not enough time to have a public hearing or issue that legal notice, um, in an emergency situation. You could use this money to pay for, um. To pay for that emergency and, uh, you just have to go ahead and have a vote of two-thirds. Uh, from the Board of Education and you have to pay back those funds, um. In the ensuing years. And this reserve is going to be monitored annually. Like the other reserves. Um, right. The funding level back in two thousand fifteen, it was set at two point five million dollars. So during the fifteen sixteen fiscal year, the Board of Education authorized the use of seven hundred and forty-seven thousand, um, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. To fix the boilers in the elementary school and also pay for a district-wide site work repairs. Um, funds that are spent from this reserve cannot be replenished. So as a result, this reserve is fully funded. And cannot increase unless the funding level is increased by referendum and a future date. And right now we are not recommending that, um, the funding level be increased and we feel that the balance is adequate. To pay for any sort of, uh, repairs that are going to be needed in the upcoming years. The retirement contribution reserve. So originally the retirement contribution reserve was set aside to just pay for. Expenses to the employee retirement system. So the district has two retirement systems that we pay into. It's the employee retirement system that all of our non-instructional support staff are members of. And then we have the teachers' retirement system, which all of our instructional staff are members of. So in the past, we were only allowed to set aside funds. To pay for employee retirement contribution costs, non-instructional. But back in two thousand nineteen, they changed the law and they said that they were going to allow schools to have a sub-fund. Of the retirement contribution reserve to set aside money to pay for teachers' retirement costs. So back in two thousand nineteen, the district did create a sub-fund. And they did set aside some monies, um, into the teachers' retirement, uh, reserve. So this and all of this money goes directly to pay for retirement contributions. You cannot use this money for anything else but that. So there's no maximum funding level for the reserve. However, the amount of monies contributed annually to the TRS sub-fund cannot exceed 2% of the total compensation or salaries of all the teachers employed by the district and who are members of TRS, nor can the balance of the sub-fund exceed 10% of the total compensation or salaries of all teachers employed by the district. So we're not anywhere near that 10% threshold. Future funding of this reserve will be authorized by the Board of Education through budgetary appropriations or year-end surplus. The actual balance of our ERS reserve, so this is the amount of money we have set aside to pay for non-instructional staff's retirement costs, is $1,338,766. So we are recommending at the end of the school year that that balance remain the same and that we only add interest to it. We feel that this reserve is adequately funded. Our 1920 ERS expense was $467,437. So we have roughly three years set aside in ERS reserve if, for some reason, we have to tap into this money to fund future budgets. The TRS reserve, on the other hand, though, we only have, at the end of June 30th, 2020, $692,890 set aside in this sub-fund. We are hoping that at the end of this school year, that there is some surplus funds available, and we can add to this balance. Because you could see that in 1920, our TRS expense was over $1.5 million. So we do not even have less than half of our TRS expense set aside in this reserve. So we feel it's really not adequately funded and that it should be increased each year until it is adequately funded and until we do have, until we meet that 10% threshold or we have at least three years of TRS expenses set aside in reserve. And then this is the employee benefit accrued liability reserve. And this reserve is our oldest reserve, and it was created back in 08, 09. And this reserve is for money set aside to pay for employee benefits that are accrued when employees retire. So when employees retire, if they're entitled to get paid out for their sick leave or accrued time, it could come directly out of this reserve. So generally, this fund can be used to pay for items such as retirement incentives, cannot be used to pay for retirement incentives, payroll taxes, or any sort of retiree health insurance. So it really is only to pay for accrued leave. Right now, this reserve, the funding level, it should be funded at 100% of the district's accrued liability, and right now it is. So the balance at the end of the last school year was $449,135. And we're recommending that at the end of this school year, that we do not increase those funds, and we just add, of course, the interest. And this is based on our district's liability for compensated absences. So our compensated absence liability right now is lower than the 449. So we feel that this reserve is adequately funded. And then we have our facilities capital reserve. So the facilities renovation capital reserve fund was created back in 2011. And the maximum amount that could be deposited into this reserve was $5 million with a period of probable usefulness of 10 years. So you can see that this is actually expiring this May. So May of 2021, this, the period of probable use, probable usefulness of this reserve has expired. So this is one of the propositions that we're going to recommend that gets added to the ballot in May, is that this reserve, the, that we have a new reserve created that we could have for long-term planning going forward. So the purpose of this reserve fund is to pay the cost of any object or purpose for which bonds may be issued or for objects or purposes of a school district pursuant to local finance law. The expenditure from the reserve fund must be authorized by district voters, and it must be for a specific purpose. So this is really for capital projects going forward. So anything that needs to get, you know, repaired, you know, big, big projects, you need voter approval to use, to use any money from this, from this reserve. And you also need voter approval to establish the reserve. So during the 1314 fiscal year, voters approved the use of $873,600 for various capital projects. During the 1617 fiscal year, voters approved another $1.2 million to undertake other capital improvements, considering, which consisted of some window replacements at the elementary school and high school. And those funds cannot be replenished. So this reserve is fully funded, and the probable term will expire. So we are recommending that voters do establish a new capital reserve at the upcoming budget vote on May 18th to continue using this reserve. Our actual balance in the reserve fund now is just over $2.9 million. If voters do approve this proposition, which would be Proposition 2, Proposition 1 would be to approve the budget for '21, '22, we're hoping that we do have surplus funds at the end of the year that we could add to this reserve. So we would be, our recommendation is that the reserve, the new reserve be established, and it be capped at $15 million over a 15-year period of probable usefulness. And that the current $2.9 million would be rolled over and be part of the initial funding source of the 15 million. Future funding of this reserve will be authorized by the board in an amount not to exceed 1.5 million in any given year during that 15, during that 15-year term. And of course, no monies can be expended without a separate vote by the community for the specific capital project. Establishment or use of the capital reserve fund will not have any impact on the '21, '22 school district budget or tax levies going forward. And then we have our transportation capital reserve fund. And this is the last reserve that we'll go through over tonight. And this reserve fund was created after it received voter approval in 2010. And then the voters also approved an increase to the reserve in 2017 of an amount not to exceed $2 million. And the probable term of this reserve fund shall be 15 years. So the purpose of this reserve is to finance in whole or in part the replacement of any of the buses in our, in our fleet. The funding level of this reserve, the reserve right now is fully funded and cannot increase unless the funding level is increased by referendum and a future date. So on May 21st, 2019, the district voters approved a proposition authorizing the use of $178,446 from this reserve. And then on June 9th, 2020, the district voters approved the use of $56,000 to purchase an additional bus from this reserve. So funds spent from this reserve also cannot be replenished. And if the funding level is increased in the future, the, the future funding would come from budgetary appropriations or year-end surplus. So our actual balance at the end of the last school year was $1,777,271. And we're recommending that the balance for the end of this school year remain the same, of course, because we're not going to put a, set another proposition out there to ask voters to increase the amount of this reserve or establish a new reserve. But we would like to put a proposition out in May to use some of the funds in this reserve. So we need to replace one of our smaller buses. That bus, we just got a quote, is $58,766. So we're hoping that we could place Proposition Number 3 on the ballot in May to purchase this bus out of this reserve fund so that it would have no impact on the tax levy and no impact on, on the budget other than the decrease in that reserve. And going forward, we have a lot of budget presentations planned, and we're going to pretty much have a budget presentation at every board meeting going forward. So today, we went through fund balance and reserves, and this is the budget development calendar that we're proposing. On January 25th, we have a big meeting planned, and we're going to go through salaries and employee benefits. And that is roughly 70, more than 70% of our budget. So that is going to be a huge portion of our budget that we're going to review on January 25th. On February 8th, we're going to start going through our revenue projections for next year. We're going to go through the Board of Ed and central administration budget areas and departments. And we'll also be reviewing the facilities, technology, and transportation budget needs for next year. March 1st, we'll review our tax levy limit. We're going to talk about how that tax levy impacts both of our, all of our taxpayers living in both towns. We also will present the elementary school budget, the middle high school budget, athletics, special education, and our BOSI's budget. And then we'll have two meetings, which is March 15th and April 10th, where we will be reviewing the entire budget again. And we can go ahead and, of course, update all of our budget projections based on all of the incoming information that's going to be also coming in at the same time. And this will give the board an opportunity to also fine-tune many of the different budget areas and ask any questions that they may have. And on April 20th, the board will be adopting the budget. So after April 20th, once the budget is adopted and the property tax report card is adopted, there can be no more changes to the budget. April 10th, we'll hold a budget hearing, which is required by law. And then that will bring us right into the May 18th budget vote. So does anyone right now have any questions on any of the slides? Or would like me to go back to any of the slides?
It's Jennifer, it's your girls. I'll go first. So I'm looking at the capital reserves, and you saying that that's going to increase from 2.9 to 3.9 million for, proposed for next year?
Oh, the facilities capital reserve?
Yes.
This is really me being very optimistic and hoping that we do have some money left over at the end of this year. And if we do have money left over, the, the priority for me in looking at all nine of these reserves, the priority would be to fund that capital reserve. So any money from this year or any future years should go right towards that capital reserve because we are going to be, right now, we're working off of our building condition survey. We're in our fifth year of our building condition survey, and we're going to be having a new building condition survey that will be prepared for next year. And there is going to be millions of dollars worth of renovate, renovations, really capital improvements and repairs that need to get done throughout all the buildings. And if we have a healthy facilities, capital reserve set aside, we will not need to borrow funds. And that's what we really would love to be able to just pay for these projects in an ongoing manner without having to borrow and not having to pay interest. And that's really, that's really for me, and I think that's, out of all nine reserves, that's really the reserve that we really need to, to increase.
In, in your estimate, I mean, for, for this Arc Harbor Learning Center, there's no more like expenditures we're planning to do for capital projects, right?
Well, I think the learning center does have some small projects that need to get done. I know that we may need to purchase some sort of like dehumidifier system for, for the basement level. I know I spoke with Paul, and he actually said that there was some, still some minor things that needed to get done. I know the windows, there's some window repairs that need to get done. They were never replaced, so that, that could be a small project. So there are definitely some things that will be needing, needing to get done there.
And then I mean, sorry to interrupt. I remember when we're doing the walkthrough, we were talking at some point about insulation in the gym, right? It before.
That could definitely be a project. And don't forget, we also have our repair reserve. So if we have a project like the windows where we're not replacing the windows, we're just repairing them, then we could go ahead and tap into those repair reserve funds. And we really do have a healthy repair reserve balance. That balance at the end of last year was $1,761,000. So that's, it's fantastic to have something like that, you know, set aside for anything that comes up throughout the year. And we don't need voter approval to use our repair reserve funds. So we can go ahead and tap into that after a public hearing.
And then the next reserve I have a question is the transportation fleet reserve. So you estimate that's going to be about 1.777 million, right?
That is our balance currently. So that was the bound, we ended the 1920 school year with that much money in that reserve.
Okay. I mean, do you see like a purpose of keeping it that high?
Well, a lot of the money that went into that reserve was generated from our transportation contracts. So the reason why that reserve was increased was because we, we transport students for our surrounding districts. And at the end of the year, we were supposed to be taking $100,000 at the end of every year to increase this reserve so that district taxpayers would never have to pay for another bus again. And that, that, those buses were going to be paid for by our surrounding districts who we're providing services to. So after we do an analysis of the, of those contracts and see where we're ending up at the end of the year, I think going forward, you know, right now, we're not recommending that that be increased. But moving forward, you know, we may want to think about setting aside, you know, some of that money to pay for some other types of one-shot type of expenses that we have instead of it funding our operating budget. So if we are in fact generating the $100,000 every year, instead of adding it to this reserve, we might want to take that $100,000 and pay it towards our debt service so that it's not funding our operating budget. Because once it's gone, it's gone.
Okay. So, and then I have a general question. So based on looking at all the reserve, do you see like that they're used appropriately? Or do you see like any room for any of them to be decreased?
I think right now, we have many reserves that are really adequately funded, and that's why in the plan, we're recommending that the balance remain as is. And, but I do feel, so I wouldn't say that anything needs to be decreased. I feel that if you have one or two years' worth of expense set aside, and for retirement, I really think it should be three years of expense set aside, then we're going to be able to really plan all of our future budgets without having to worry about a huge spike in our tax rate. Because if we have any budget going forward where, for some reason, our tax levy limit is like next to zero, and we need money to fund our ongoing costs, we can tap into these reserves, have them fund our expense that year, and we won't have to have our taxpayers see a huge spike in their, in their taxes for any, for any year. So it's great to have this, it's great for planning purposes. We haven't finished our budget or even really began most of our budget for next year, and we may actually be tapping into some of these reserves based on how the numbers turn up.
All right, sounds good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Jennifer. I think it was extremely helpful. I would ask that we could put these slides up on the district website so that the, I think they're very informative and they, in simple terms, lay out what each is for so that if there were confusion, you know, from the public or questions, it's really identified here, so thank you for that. So I was just asking Scott to get these up on the district website so that everyone can see them. I think that's super important. And with that, are there any other board questions for Jennifer?
Yes, could we, first of all, Jennifer, I want to thank you. I think this is like an excellent primer on reserves. Besides giving details about our district, just the fact you've kind of defined each one is a fabulous tool for anyone to look at going forward. So thank you. And I'm sure this is a lot of work, but it's excellent. Can we go back to the TRS slide, please?
Yeah, let's go back to the TRS slide. The retirement contribution, basically the one that has the balance?
Yes, I think you, I think you mentioned that you wanted to build it to three, you wanted to build it, and it could go to, up to 3% of our?
Yeah.
I was confused by that. So if you don't mind just reviewing that again, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, this reserve is a little tricky because we're very limited on what we can actually deposit into the reserve at the end of the year. So you can see, our TRS expense is very high. It's over 1.5 million every year. It goes up every year. And right now, in the sub-fund, we have less than $700,000 set aside. But if you look at the, the actual funding level, there is no maximum level of funding, but the amount of monies each year that can be actually contributed is limited. And I just want to see if I have it on. Let me just make sure I have one. So, yeah, so this is really it. So there is no maximum funding level for the reserve. However, the amount of monies contributed annually to the TRS sub-fund cannot exceed 2% of the total compensation or salaries of all the teachers employed by the district who are members of the system paid during the immediately preceding fiscal year. So what we would have to do is, we would have to see exactly what we paid, what we paid out to the teachers or all the instructional staff for the 2021 school year. And we can take 2% of that, and that's how much money could actually be added to the reserve. So it's 2% of what all the teachers or instructional staff are paid is what our maximum deposit could be each year.
Okay, so we can't, we can't deposit enough to cover our expenses every year? So every year, at least for the receiver future, you think we're going to have to move stuff around to cover this?
No, because right now we're, we're hope, we're not planning on using this to, um, fund our budget for twenty one, twenty two. We're hoping that we don't have to touch these funds. Um, if we are going to, you, if we are going to need funds to support the budget next year, we probably will tap into the ERS reserve and not the TRS reserve. Just because our ears, our ERS reserve is fully funded and we do have three years set aside. So if, so in planning, we'll probably take funds from that reserve and not the TRS reserve.
All right, that makes sense. And then something that is, uh, I know we talked about, uh, transportation. At a future date, when we do have time, I think we've talked about, this is previous to returning, kind of the, the desire to have it, uh, kind of a deep dive analysis on our transportation costs, just to have a better understanding of it. Since we do, you know, since we've kind of built this internal transportation department. And we're, uh, we're running a much larger, um, effort there than we did a decade ago, just to have a better understanding of that. I know I'm not expecting that now because there's so much else going on.
And that's definitely something I have on my to do list.
It's very long to do list, I'm sure. Uh, separately, there have been some years when we were, um, had, had our, uh, scheduled budget presentations that we actually had budget workshops that were separate from our board meetings. And I'm an advocate of that because in a workshop setting, there's a better exchange and it's not, you know, squeezed in between, uh, like a business meeting agenda items. And when it's a workshop, it's just more, you could ask questions as they come up. Those that might be, um, participating can, you know, from the public can participate more. So I'm just wondering if we've thought about kind of, you have the workshop and then afterwards you have the business meeting.
Chris, let me interject. I, I actually wrote the Board of Education, uh, uh, between a week or two ago about this very issue.
Right.
And solicited feedback. I'm not sure you saw that, but the feedback I got from the board was they were in support of, uh, the presentations being within the context of a regular meeting. Ryan, do you want to interject?
Yeah, I'm just bringing it up because I don't think we had a, we like, we didn't have a discussion about it. It was email. And so I was sharing, I, I don't know, I think most board members weren't on the board when we had workshops. So I was just advocating that I thought they were, um, more inclusive publicly. That's all. But if, you know, if people still don't want to support it.
I think that, um, I, I think what you're talking about is what we, we hope to accomplish here, Chris, not separate them into workshop and business meeting, but have it as similar to town hall style with the board, with the public, with the administration, um, as we have for, for meetings so far this year. So that will accomplish, um, the way it is set up, uh, will accomplish what, what you're, uh, seeking, which I think is important so that we have interaction with the public in a town hall style. So, you know, how it's crafted on the, on the agenda may be different, but the intent and how it's going to apply uh, are there and that framework is going to work that way where we will be interactive, have questions, answers with both the board and the public and administration.
Fantastic. Thank you. Thank you.
So any other questions? If not, um, I'm going to place a resolution on the agenda for the next meeting for the board to just approve the reserves plan. And then we'll also be attaching this presentation to that, to that resolution. So and of course, if there's anything else that you want tweaked or changed, we can also go ahead and do that. So thanks. Let me not, I guess I gotta stop sharing my screen. Stop share. Okay. There you go.
Perfect. Great. Any other questions, uh, for the, by the board, uh, for Ms. Pashemi? Okay, great. Thank you so much. Off to a good start. So with that, we will move to section seven of our agenda, which are policy actions. Is there a motion on policy action seven point one to approve the second reading and adopt policy thirty five, twenty?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, uh, can we open up the voting, Mary?
That's unanimous.
Thank you. Item seven point two on tonight's agenda, which is approve the second reading and adopt policy five, six, seven, six. Is there a motion?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
All in favor? I'm sorry. Is there discussion? Seeing, hearing, no discussion. Mary, please open up the voting.
That's unanimous.
Moving on to our consent agenda, is there a motion for consent agenda items eight point two through eight point one, seven?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just wanted to welcome the new employees to the district.
Absolutely.
Say thank you for joining the team.
Thank you very much. Mary, please open up the voting.
And by the way, it's nice to see some alumni on that list.
That's unanimous.
Okay. On to section ten of tonight's agenda, uh, moving reports, starting with ten point one, the athletic committee. Is any, is there anybody faculty or board wants to give an update on the athletic committee? If not, I know, uh, we can, we can, we'll carry this over as well from a school at the next meeting. Item ten point two, the audit committee. Is there any faculty or board member that would, uh, wants to share anything as an update to the audit committee or its work? You don't have to. We just wanted to place these on the agenda so that if there was something, we could inform everybody.
Not at this time.
Item ten point three, the communications committee with the same caveat. If there is anything that wants to be, anyone wants to share, now would be the time to do it with respect to the communications committee.
Scott, do you want to share an update? Since your co-chair?
So the, the committee has met a number of times now, um, a couple of times per month. The goal is to put together an updated, uh, survey to send out to faculty, parents and to some extent, students, probably just the oldest students to get a, a better understanding of, um, how it, how we could better improve the communications, both from the district out to those, those people and from the outside back into the district and, and within the district as well. So that, that's been the primary focus. We've broken out into subcommittees. We came back from subcommittee with, um, some work last week and, uh, Chris, I don't know the timeline exactly. Maybe you could help me out, but I know there's a push to try to get something before the board, uh, sooner than later.
I, I think that the goal was to try to have something to present to the board at the next board meeting. All the input was due on the, on the questions by Sunday. Um, and then it was going to be summarized and sent to administration for review ahead of time. But I don't know if, I don't know, uh, yesterday's deadline was met. But that, but that was the intent, but the, the ultimate goal is to try to have the recommendations to the board before the budget vote. So, so being able to implement the survey before that, then to, to draw the recommendations. So if it had an impact on the budget or budget recommendations, it would come in time before the final budget.
Right. So we will keep you posted on, uh, where things go from here.
Thank you. We'll be going to item ten point four, university and inclusion committee. If there is anything to report or anything that faculty, board members or anyone would like to share with respect to that committee at this time.
Yes, I can share that this month for January, our subcommittees are meeting for the entire month. So as an extension of diversity and inclusion, we have four subcommittees and that is the student subcommittee. That is the professional development subcommittee, classroom libraries, and also tough topics, which is the film series, the collaboration that we have with John Germain Library. There is a meeting scheduled every week for this week of January. The student subcommittee has already met. And then I would love to share how all of these meetings went for the February meeting, um, Board of Ed meeting. I can wrap up how those meetings went and share what was discussed.
Absolutely. We will.
First, uh, February first is our full subcommittee, uh, full committee meeting for diversity and inclusion. Monday, February first from four to five P M.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Rino. Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off there. It froze. So I thought you had stopped speaking. So my apologies. We will, we will be keeping this section on all agendas going forward. So there will be an opportunity to share and keep everybody informed going forward. So yes, uh, February will be an opportunity for that. Item ten point five, the educational facilities and planning committee. If there is an update, if not, we will carry that over to February. Okay. Item ten point six, nutrition, wellness, health and safety committee. If there is an update, anything of importance to share. I know the work is important, but anything new that we want to hit on, we can or wait till February?
I think we're going to wait till February till our next meeting.
Great. Thank you. Item ten point seven, the policy committee, uh, same, same comments, if there is any.
Yes. Good evening, Colonel Neers, Policy Committee Chair. Just a quick heads up, we've been trying to, uh, primarily focus on remaining current and staying on top of all curve. Excuse me, current policy recommendations. So as you noticed, we approved two policies this evening and that was the, uh, work of our December tenth meeting. We also met on January seventh and we reviewed policy fifty six, seventy records management. And you'll see that at the next board meeting. And as we keep current with this, it'll actually ease our turnaround after we approve the draft manual, which is what we'll be working on in between meetings. We should have those section reviews ready by March.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Item ten point eight, the school calendar committee.
Yeah, a quick update. Um, we probably will be meeting next week, um, with the goal being to come up with, uh, an advisory recommendation of the board. The student council, uh, I spoke with them last week and they're working with Ms. Carriero to put out a Google survey, uh, to gather some student thoughts, um, on the calendar recommendations for next year and those, uh, that information will be incorporated into the next meeting.
Great. Thank you. Item ten point nine, the transportation committee, same, uh, same comments. Item ten point ten, the wall of honor committee, same comments. And again, it'll be carried over to February if there's an update in February.
No update at this time.
Thank you. Item eleven, no items for discussion at this point. Onto item twelve, which is our second public input. Is there anybody is here from the public that would like to speak during public input number two? Now would be your opportunity to do that. Please raise your hand or put your question into the chat box. I believe there was a question in the chat box, Jeff, that I.
I see it. So there is a, um, a question, uh, from Dominic LaPierre with two elements. The first was, please confirm that the district reserves are within the limitation defined by the state controller. Uh, the answer to that is yes. Uh, and if in fact, we were not within the limit, uh, the auditors would have noted that in their report. And question number two is with regard to the SAG Harbor Learning Center, please update the community on the new facility's current use and any anticipated changes to future use and or future facility needs. So, uh, COVID this year, um, we moved, uh, the kindergarten, uh, down to, uh, the learning center. We're hopeful that we'll, uh, with the vaccine rollout, that twenty one, twenty two will be different and we'll be able to return uh, the kindergarten to the elementary school. And if indeed that's the case, uh, we would look to run an all day pre K program. Uh, and Ms. Reynoso and, and Mr. Malone are in the process of, um, uh, addressing the necessary permitting to make that happen with the respective state office. So we'll know more, uh, about future use when we know what COVID looks like, uh, as we get closer to next year.
Great. Any other questions? Do you see any other hands or questions, Mr. Fisher?
I do not.
Okay. With that, I will entertain a motion to close the meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous.
Great. Thank you, everybody. Have a great evening, uh, and we will speak soon.
Aye.
Good night.